All right, in case everybody doesn't know everybody, Debbie Dennehy is the Rappahannock Supervisor for the area.
Gary Curry.
Gary Curry. Chief Brown from Chester Gap.
Kevin Williams.
From Rappahannock. You're the...
He's from Chester Gap.
Okay. Why did I feel Kevin is in...
He used to be, yes.
Okay. I've heard that name somewhere. Karen Attico with Fire Rescue, Fire Marshal, Chief Maye, Archie Fox, um, North, um, Fort. I'm not ready. Chairman Maye and Laura Souts and then Robert Bandini from the Nudes and Mark. So that's everybody. And I'm, we're Dr. Don, so I'm going to turn it over to, do you want Chief Brown to start off with the need or?
Explain what you do, what they're doing up there and what they would like us to do. And how it fits with our system.
Okay, well then, I'm going to turn it over to him. Basically, he's going to go through what we're all doing here and it's basically a station that is mutual aid, but you know, growing up here, I always thought they were in Warren County, so it's one of those, you border enough people that you're helping everybody. So, and he's in need of help, so we're here to try to figure this all out, how we can Rappahannock and help Warren, and Warren can help Rappahannock.
Is there documentation that we're supposed to follow?
Um, I can share what I have. I got this for numbers. I thought we were going to get more, but...
I didn't get anything either.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Do you have a copy machine?
We understand what you're proposing.
Mr. Carey has it.
What we've got here, we'll get back to you.
That's graphic.
Our numbers to show you the stats of the calls, Better Row in Warren County, Rappahannock, and Falk here, because they run Falk here as well. It's an interesting little triangle area up there.
I can, if you want me to start, I can go kind of what brought us here to this point. Of course, back in March, as everybody knows, when the COVID hit, we were had on, you know, in our membership list, we had about six or seven active EMTs. We had two or three that probably were running, you know, one that ran 90% of the calls, the other ones ran, you know, picked up a lot also. But in March, when the COVID did hit, we were, I was faced with, we lost three EMTs right off the bat, resigned completely, two resigned completely, one actually had just got done nursing school and of course, he pretty much could write his own check anywhere for, to work in a hospital, so he decided not to stay here, so he moved to South Carolina and took a job down there making twice the money. So that left me with three providers. As the COVID progressed more through March, Kevin Williams was one of our providers. He works as a federal firefighter, so his work said, no more, you can no longer volunteer, you can't, he wasn't even allowed to come to the station. So there was another one we lost. In the meantime, we had one gentleman that had just had surgery on his shoulder, so we didn't really lose him because of COVID, but you know, he, he couldn't get therapy, he couldn't go to the doctor, he couldn't, so he was off on workman's comp. He's also employed Prince William County, and so with being on workman's comp, he couldn't, he could no longer come to the station. So that left us with one firefighter, one EMT. She approached me on March the 22nd and said, you know, I've got to make a decision, my both parents are elderly, not in good health, and she says, at some point in time, I'm going to have to say, you know, I can no longer run. And I says, well, please let me know, give me a heads up, so that I can see what we can do to, you know, protect the citizens of Rappahannock and Warren County. And so, two hours later, I receive a phone call and says, well, I can't run anymore. So, you know, I'm thinking that I'm going to have a week or two to put something together. I had two hours. So I went from having six providers to no providers. So I, you know, contacted the county administrator and our representative and also contacted Mrs. Cullors, and I said, well, this is, this is kind of what we're going to do. We're going to go ahead and put in place a paid person. We're going to pay for that person until hopefully the federal government would come up with some type of, you know, we didn't, there was no CARES Act money then. It hadn't really been put out there yet. We didn't really know what was going to happen, but we were anticipating that hopefully the federal government would be putting out some money to help with things like this in emergencies. So we went through all the, trying to make it shorter, we went through all the proper steps through the state and through the county and different things to put it in place, and so now we have a, one paid person, and of course, this person is part-time, it is not a full-time position, they have no benefits other than being covered through the insurance and workman's comp. We do carry workman's comp on them. It is a 24/7 position, it is one person there, we still have a pretty good base of volunteers that are, you know, of course, the volunteers have to be there to, to help them and to drive for them and, you know, to make sure the unit gets out, which that was going pretty good, and then we ended up having one of our main call runners have a massive heart attack. So that even took our staffing down even lower. So it was a definite need. I know that, you're probably familiar with Lakefront Royal and Point of Woods, there's a lot of houses there, a lot of population. Chester Gap within a two square mile radius is over 800 people, so we do, you know, provide a service to a pretty good population all in one little area. The call status that we had sent out, you know, for years, we've always ran more calls in Warren County than we run in Rappahannock. And I know Mrs. Cullors was saying that we are mutual aid company, we are actually an automatic aid company, we're automatically, you know, put into, we have a first due area in Warren County, so, in which we receive funding from Warren County. But that's kind of led us to where we're at. I know, you know, Rappahannock has runned the, the cost for the first, I think we turned in, what, six months' worth of, of cost, and that's kind of, kind of why we're here. So I, Mr. Carey can kind of go into, to the rest of, the rest of it. I mean, I'll try to answer any questions anybody has, if you have any, so.
So I think overall, it's a pretty simple discussion that Chester Gap Volunteer Fire and Rescue provide service to both of our communities, and both of our communities right now are providing financial support for Chester Gap, which is, which is fantastic. With the recent changes that have required part-time paid EMS providers to be at the station, that cost has increased. And Rappahannock County has picked that up through CARES funding, through public safety payroll provision, and, and have been paying that right now, and we would like to explore, and the reason we're here today is explore whether we can share that burden with Warren County recognizing the, the split of actual calls. Now, this is all calls, fire and EMS, but it's a good proxy for what's happening out of that station. We are very grateful, and Chester Gap's grateful, that Warren County provides annual funding to the company on a complex formula, probably on your side, and Rappahannock provides funding to the, to the company. I believe we provide about a, maybe $120,000 a year to the company, and I think Warren provides around $40,000.
Yeah, $39,000.
And so, but we understand that the opportunity and availability of a fire company is most important. How many calls they run, you know, is valuable and goes to how much, how many gallons of gas they run and everything else, but the fact, they have to be there to respond, so we know that that's a big part of it, and, and we're, we don't have a problem with providing funding, but we just want to make sure that that is shared reasonably between our citizens of our two communities.
So this is a, what you've done is in addition?
In addition, yeah. We've paid out about $30,000 for FY '20, and that TIL is still running into FY '21 now.
And that's about $10,000 a month?
About.
That's what it is.
If I could, I don't mean to interrupt, but if, just to give you a rundown on how we are implementing this, we take care of all the scheduling, well, I do as the chief. We do the scheduling, we take care of the payroll, we're handling it all internally. There's no admin expense or anything to Rappahannock County. You know, I don't know how we could work out the logistics between Warren, but as of right now, we're, we're handling the employee ourselves. It's not being managed by the county, it's being managed by, by myself and the Board of Chester Gap. But, you know, like I say, we, we do the scheduling, you know, we take care of the payroll, we pay them every two weeks, we, I then in turn submit the, the bill, invoice of all of the, everybody's hours. After we have paid it, then I submit it to, to Mr. Carey, and that's when they have reimbursed us. So that's how we're operating and how we're managing it now. Like I say, I don't know, you know, if...
It's a critical distinction, this, we're talking about an employee of Chester Gap Volunteer Fire and Rescue, not of Rappahannock County.
And what we'd be talking about is right now, Rappahannock is reimbursing, you're asking if Warren would reimburse a portion of it and Rappahannock would reimburse the other portion of it.
And I would envision that Chester Gap would send us an invoice for 50% and send Warren an invoice for 50%, unless you were so inclined to pay greater than 50%, we would say, most definitely. But, you know, the chart shows the relative proportions, and in 2019, it's close to 50%. I think that's reasonable, without getting into the minutia of decimals, we are sharing the services by this company, and, and it would be nice if we could share the, the cost burden for this particular EMS provider issue.
What's the dollar amount, as you see it right now?
As Mr. Daley said, it's about $10,000 a month, and so for FY '21, that's six months, because CARES Act ends on December 30th. Now, we would like to have a continued discussion of what, what's going to happen after December 30th. We hope that the volunteers are going to come back into the system, but there's a level of service that both Warren County and Rappahannock County need to be talking about, and Rappahannock County is having these discussions right now on making sure we have adequate BLS and ALS providers available, and Chester Gap could come to play there, and we're not sure how that's going to end, whether it's going to be a county branded EMS service, which we have none of right now in Rappahannock County, whether it's going to be a continuation of a model such as at Chester Gap or some hybrid approach. But we do see this need going into the future, it's just somewhat undefined, because we just don't know what the volunteer's going to do. December 30th is coming close, though, relative to the CARES funding, and that's the first question. After we, after the clock strikes, you know, December 31st, then we will have a lot of questions to ask and...
So I think the Board could look at something for six months with CARES Act up through, from July through December, and probably because of the illness itself, probably looking at six-month continuation that would come from our general fund of, to make it through July, June 30th rather, July 1st, and then we would have to come up with a plan as to what we're going to do long-term beyond this fiscal year, and how it relates to the Rappahannock Fire System and how it relates to the Warren Fire System, how it integrates in there. But I think that's a longer-term discussion. I think the short-term is six months of CARES Act at $5,000 a month and six months of general fund at $5,000 a month.
I think one thing we need to, and we met last Thursday to try to organize for this, and the one thing that, you know, I asked was, is one person part-time, and being part-time, that means none of us are paying benefits, which is cost savings there, is, is one person enough to, to supplement when, or what is the, the perfect ratio? And we came up with three basic scenarios of one person 24/7, and that being with part-time staff, and I said, I think you said you had a pool of about 10 people at this point.
Yes.
One person 24/7, one person 12-hour shift, or two people 24/7, which, for all of you who like the buy one, get one free, that would mean Warren County would pay for one, Rappahannock would get, pay for one, and we pay for one, get one free on both ends, which would provide more coverage and 24/7 coverage at a, I mean, cheaper price for both of us in, in the long run, and you're getting, because you've got one person sitting there, but one person can't recall on their, by themselves. So you've, you've got them sitting there, they can take a piece of equipment out, but they're sitting there twiddling their thumbs until somebody else comes, which is, depending on the case, time that somebody could end up dying because we don't have it there. So those are options that I think we need to figure out while we're here as well, of not only are we going to help support, but to what extent we're going to do that to work it out here.
Well, if I, if I may, I think that, you know, because we weren't at the meeting Thursday, and this is the first opportunity we had to really be involved in discussion as the fire administration, is I think certainly we feel for Chester Gap as we do for every other fire department in the Warren County/Rappahannock County system, as we have additional stations that are facing the same challenges as, as Chester Gap. I think if you look at the monthly statistics that the chief emails out, is, you know, in particularly, we have three stations as it sits today with an exuberant fail rate based off of no coverage at all. We are doing that with our supplemental coverage of our career staff stations. You know, I think it is beneficial for the Board to consider this, but I think it's also beneficial for us to be able to go back and look at the response statistics that have occurred through this staffing plan and figure out what in fact the benefit was. We know that there is a benefit associated with that staff member being there, but as Ms. Cullors alluded to, a single staff member, we're still providing a level of service out of the Front Royal Station, so I think that it would still make a fruitful decision to have that hard, fast data to be able to determine, do we go for two people at, at Chester Gap and alleviate that, outside of an ALS response, alleviate that call pressure off of that main station? In addition to, I would encourage the Board to let us, if we're going to consider this for that automatic aid, mutual aid station, is, do we look at the increase of staffing in the stations that we don't have staff? Because the other model is, and I know that Kevin and Chief Brown and I had this conversation early into this about the fire board over there asking for Warren County to staff, is what we would like to see is our, Chester Gap actually staffed with our communications center, so when we become depleted in resource or empty, we get that service not only to the Chester Gap citizens of our response district, but also neighboring. When we've called, they've come, right, so we've had staff members know that there's an ambulance sitting at Chester Gap, but they just weren't on that automatic dispatch. So it took that human element to initiate that, that dispatch and response procedure. So I think it's fruitful for us to go in and look at as the actual response statistics out of our fire administration, if we haven't had a chance to until this point. And I know that they've been busier, I know that this is, that's certainly provided a level of service, it is that funding mechanism for that, a lot of the service, if I make it remotely any sense at all.
Well, I look at this as kind of a, a training ground of, I mean, we've, we've staffed Company Six for quite a while now, even when it was in Clark County, so that was kind of a beginning, but we were totally funding that with Clark County giving us a little. But we have Linden that sits with Falk here. If this would work out, then to me, I liken it, we're taking a budget class, and it was brought up in our budget class, which was in, Ms. Donahue's in that class as well, which we were asked, you know, the question of how, what services do you partner with? And I thought, well, RSW, and then of course, I remembered our solid waste as well, and that's what made me think of, well, why couldn't we partner with some of our bordering counties on fire EMS? So, and this just happened to be the perfect place to try it out, to see how it works, because right now, that's where the bigs need is, but if this would work out to both counties' advantage, then I would think that we should have discussions with Falk here and say, hey, you don't have, your nearest is the marshal, yet we share a bus loading area, because one side of the road up on the mountain, Falk here, and our side's Warren. So there again, buy one, get one free. I mean, you, if it doesn't work out, then we say, didn't work out.
Well, I think historically, we've, we've had those discussions. This is not a unique, we do that funding mechanism with Middletown, Chester Gap, and Shenandoah Farms, so those community fire stations. So this is not a unique venture. When you look at it holistically, if Middletown came to us and said, hey, we want you to fund half of the career staff in Middletown, I think that's...
A little different when they're not sitting right on the board, when the fire station's sitting around the board, it comes out a little more.
They're less than, their fire station's two miles from the county line, so they, we fund them to have a first due response area, no more, no less than Clark funds Shenandoah Farms to have that first due response area, we fund Chester Gap to have that first due response area. What we do, you don't find anywhere else. We don't believe in sandbox issues, we believe in the best value of service for the citizens, and that's why we, we create those funding mechanisms. That's why we have, not a derogatory term, that's why we have outside agencies being funded by you, the Board of Supervisors, to provide that level of service. If you think we're getting called into these other localities, like we're calling them into us and we expect a level of funding, I don't think you'll see that, you can open a discussion, but we've had that discussion in the past.
No, I agree, he's helping us a lot more than we're helping him, but, you know, so, I mean, we can, we can nitpick this thing to pieces.
One thing I want to add is, to what Jerry was saying, was as far as looking at the stats and everything for Chester Gap is with Rappahannock paying out the CARES Act and everything, I want everybody to understand on that end of the county, what Chester Gap is receiving from over there, as far as, the reason we haven't marked staffed in Warren County since we've had career people there is because Rappahannock was paying for that person 100%, and we have other board members, other committees and all that, that have brought up the question as far as, well, we're paying for this person, they're spending most of their time in Warren County. That's the reason we haven't marked staffed. So when you go looking at those stats and everything, those stats could be a whole lot higher for us coming into Warren County and assisting if we were marking staffed to respond in Warren County, but that's the reason we have not marked staffed in Warren County. Now, Warren County knows that unit's there and available, all they got to do is call for it, you know, that's up to them on how they...
What does marked staff mean to a living man?
They're available.
Our response system, if you, if you live in a district or if you call in a district where their emergency responders are not readily available, let's just say you live in the middle of Front Royal and their ambulance is out on another call, we send a staffed unit right away. We don't wait for a timeframe to send a unit, so we're automatically sending the closest neighboring department to provide that level of service. We do that currently with Chester Gap from a first due, second due, third due standpoint. So I think that, Kevin's absolutely right, I think that the statistical data will show that that hasn't in fact happened like it could have, and I think that that's why...
If they had allocated dedicated resources, is what you're hoping.
Correct. So what I would say is, let us, let us compile that statistical information for you, and in theory, an agreement with Rappahannock County, Chester Gap Fire Department, that if we do this and the, and the county's going to allocate that certain amount of CARES Act funding, here's the level of service that you're going to provide and the parameters of it, no more, no less than we would with any other funding mechanism.
So you're basically going to compile something that looks like what he compiled? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, I think it's going to be different in that you're going to compile something that shows, what, can you, can you theoretically compile something that shows what the level of service would have been if you had somebody dedicated?
Yes.
Because that's what I want to know.
So what I think what we can show is, is in theory, this, this 74 incidents that were responded to in Warren, for your investment, in theory, could actually be a little higher and alleviate the pressures. Now, Rappahannock's going to have to say, we use Chester Gap Fire Department as part of that funding mechanism, they're no longer available to respond to the citizen in Rappahannock County. That's going to be a, and that's based off of available staffing, so they very well, that career unit may be able to handle one call, an EMS call in the town of Front Royal. If it's a fire call, we have full faith that they're going to be able to provide that level of service. This is an EMS provider-based response.
So you know there's going to be something that's needed there from July to June 30th?
Right.
My suggestion would be to agree to fund the one person who's there that they're using now, that position, and then let the department work with Rappahannock and come up with their report to you, and whether you need to have a second position. But that would, I think, I think the number one thing is that they are, they are coming down our side of the hill, and we should help fund that, and that would be the person who's there now, and rather than saying, we're going to make that two people, let's let them do the report, and then come back and we can all say, yeah, we need to have two people up there, or we need one and a half, or we're happy with one, whatever that number is, and then we can fund that.
Okay.
But we should talk about funding the one person.
Now, with the CARES Act and the general fund.
Half, six months of the CARES Act. Two June 30th of 2021.
Makes sense.
Yep.
And we could do a little mini agreement, say we're doing that.
Does that sound good to you?
I like that.
It doesn't need to be very complicated.
Well, it's clear we're using your half a person.
Yes, we're using...
Maybe more than our half.
Let me, let me throw this out here too, to be totally fair and transparent. Warren County, because of how their policy runs in, in Rappahannock, which we have nothing to do with, they, our busiest station in the county had 130 more calls added to them because we had to add a staffed company with them for every call in Warren County, if that makes sense.
But it makes sense that without them, that might be 130 calls you can't make.
Well, what we're saying is, we're already getting dispatched, so with them not being staffed, Front Royal is initiating that response, or a neighboring jurisdiction or company, they're initiating that response, going around, it may be canceled once Chester Gap assembles their resources with that career staff. So they may get canceled. On the flip side, I think Saturday's a prime example of a cardiac arrest in Lakefront Royal. Front Royal beats them to that call. And I don't want to say beat, it's a bad word, but arrived on the scene first because they had one person in the station and had to assemble their volunteer responders to, and I'd assume that that's what happened to initiate that response.
You're making a case for two people though, Derek.
Well, absolutely, I think, I think to us...
I think in the study, that may very well be what comes out.
I think that's what we may learn from the data.
And that's my only thing, how long's this study going to take, because a cardiac arrest with one person, you can do CPR by yourself, but you can't transfer it.
Well, that call he's referring to, we did respond with two people. It wasn't, it wasn't, Front Royal still had to respond with a medic unit, because we responded at a BLS level, which I think we responded within probably four, three to four minutes. I mean, it's not like it was 20 minutes later, we showed up on the scene.
No, I got what you're saying.
I mean, we, they showed up on the scene, you know, right behind the medic unit, so it's not like they didn't, you know, didn't respond.
But the same thing, you said if all Front Royal stations were depleted, and that's happened before, you're all out, so the same thing comes, is, you know, we discussed that at the meeting. If you're on a call in Rappahannock, you can't be at all or more, but that's true of every station in the county.
Oh, absolutely.
You can't be two places at one time.
You can't predict that.
And I would say, I'm sorry, most importantly, if there is a BLS call in, up near Chester Gap, and their ALS crew has to respond, they're not available for an ALS call.
No, absolutely.
And so...
And that's what, that's what, that's why I... And that's what, that's what, that's why I brought this up. That's what's happening. Front Royal is, is.
Initiating that.
Stabs ALS every day.
Part of those, um, excuse me.
No, I was going to say, and our volunteer issue is for the same result.
Part of this analysis, though, you may want to look at, do we need one ALS, one BLS? Because you guys have been great being able to get an ALS over into Rapid Hennick County when we only have one maybe in the entire county. So that's been extremely beneficial. And if you look at the numbers and the statistics, it may show that it would make sense to have one of each, not just two BLS.
Yeah, Front Royal.
Right, absolutely.
It's not going to take a long time.
Medic unit responded to a cardiac, four cardiac arrests just two days ago, all the way into Flint Hill. Front Royal responded to it. And it was very beneficial to the call. Our paid staff responded and we, it was right at shift change, so we did have two people there. I responded also with them, so we had three. But, you know, it, it's, it's a good balance, you know? I mean, it does work. I mean, a lot of times, if it is a BLS call, Front Royal is dispatched, but a lot of times if it's BLS, we put that ALS unit in service and that keeps the ALS unit available for Front Royal, the busiest station in the county. So, I mean, it is, it is a nice balance. I mean, yes, they are initially dispatched on every call, but a lot of times they're not needed because it is a BLS call. So we, we do place them in service and keep them in service for, for more serious calls in Front Royal. So, I mean, it is, it is a, it is a balancing act.
Working cooperatively is how you get things done. That's for certain.
Well, I think the, the other consideration for the board is certainly, once this goes out, is we have additional stations with no staffing in it. We have to prepare ourselves for the, we're providing funding for a mutual automatic aid company. What are you going to do for my station that's in the same boat? I think we can handle that accordingly and have that meeting at the chief staff level and have them submit a request for staffing. But I think that that question is likely going to be posed to the system of, we protect citizens within your jurisdiction as well, and we're not getting any additional assistance above and beyond the normal resources you allocate. So fair, I just think we need to prepare ourselves for it and, and have that response ready because I would imagine it will come.
And we can tell you that we've already heard that.
Oh, I'm sure. No, absolutely.
Well, and, you know, the way I look at it, like I said, if this worked out and say we got into an agreement with Falk here and they staffed one, that's one staff that you could take and put in an unstaffed place. If we got the same thing from Clark, where they pay for a person, that's another person. So there's two people that you can put into one of the company five or company eight, as you assume you're talking about.
So my question is, can we get, so our next voting meeting is going to be the twenty years? Can we get this analysis done by the next voting meeting so that we can make a decision?
I don't, I don't think this will, the analysis will hold up the use of the CARES Act funding.
Okay, all right.
We can do it personally.
I think if it's going to be a long-term venture, that's where the statistical data's going to come into play, is for you as that elected official, this expenditure over here, is it better suited somewhere else in the response system? And that's all we want to make sure is that the numbers match. We're almost putting you in an impossible position of which citizen's more important. I hate to say that with the camera on, but if we have jurisdictions with an 82% fail rate and they're in the same exact boat as Chester Gap, and we can provide a higher level of service or a faster level of service to more people, is it more appropriate? I don't foresee that. But I think that's the statistical data that you as the elected body need to make with a long-term funding commitment.
I think we were all thinking that this was to get us through COVID, and then we would figure it out.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, absolutely.
I'm talking two people versus one. That this is a time when we've, COVID is pushing us to do things. We've got COVID money. As far as this being a forever and ever amen, none of us were looking at that. We're looking at getting us through this period, one versus two, which they would pay for one, we would pay for one. Once COVID's over, then we need to sit down and they've got a lot that they got to figure out, we've got a lot to figure out. So.
COVID's over in two months.
Well, that's right.
COVID's over as far as one year. CARES Act over in two months, this situation's not going to be over in two months.
But they're, but they're talking about possibly extending.
Well, I was going to say, aren't they extending or discussing extending the expenditure piece of it, giving you more time to spend on money?
They may decide to do that. We don't know.
I've heard them roll into that in, in the government.
Yes.
See, your expectation of looking at this through June probably makes total sense.
Yeah.
And that'll give us a lot of time for analysis and everything else.
Well, I think, I think we have to, we have to think about too, and I, there's no way you can answer this, this right now, but, you know, we saying COVID's going to be over, we all know that's associated with money more than anything else, because there's still going to be COVID out there. Suppose they don't get any EMS people back?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Is that the time, is that the time that you turn over to look at continual past staff?
We're actively looking at all models to provide EMS service.
I can assure you, I haven't sent the, the response for, for September to you, but we broke an all-time record. Ninety-two percent, no response.
Well, and so.
So I agree with Jerry.
We've got to figure it out one way or the other.
I agree, pardon.
That's why we need to figure this out because it's an issue that's hitting, who, who hurts here? The people that pick up the phone and call 911. So we've, we've got to figure out how to provide a service for the short term. Then we got to figure out the long term, which we don't know what it's going to be, how long this is going to last, or what it looks like when they say, it's done, folks. Take off your mask and go your happy way. Then, you know, life, we got to figure it out from there. But.
First of all, contrary to popular belief, I'm not against this.
Oh, I'm not saying you are, but it's.
But I do believe that we need to throw all of the information out on the table so that you're making a logical decision, so that when Shenandoah Shores comes to you and sits where these two guys are sitting right now and says, we want our two people.
We have, we have four people on the response role.
Right.
And here's our, here's our response data. That same passion that you just demonstrated, is it going to be there for that jurisdiction?
Like I said.
I don't want to be negligent and not provide information for you to make.
And I don't want to leave any of the stations out either. That's why I'm saying, you can't eat the whole apple at one time. You're going to choke on it. So you take one step at a time and, and figure out, does this work? And can we, can we implement it somewhere else? That's all I'm saying. But if we don't take the first step and try, we're not going to know.
No, I'm, I'm putting myself in Shenandoah Shores's, I'm going to tell you straight up, I'm putting myself in the place of Chief Five in Shenandoah Shores, and I'm going to want to know why I can't get two guys at my station.
And Rapid Hennick saw the writing on the wall that.
How did y'all handle it?
There was going to be a 100% fail rate. And so we didn't have a choice. And so to avoid a 100% fail rate, we said, we have to do something. And so we're asking you to help us do something to avoid that 100% fail rate. If Rapid Hennick County has to fund this 100%, we're going to do it. But we think it's reasonable to share it.
And we do too.
We do too.
Absolutely.
I don't think you can argue position about that part, but again.
Well, and there we will have to deal with the second step when the second step comes and the third step when the third step comes. Much like the first time you put in for the safer grant, we didn't get it. Try, try, try again, you got it. So, you know, everything has changed, and this is step one. Let's, let's give it a try. Whether we do one person, one and a half people, or two, it's, it's a training ground to see where we can go. And then we need to, if it works, we need to go have discussions on how we can maybe make it work other places.
And I think maybe that it's, it's, it's time for Chester Gap Chief maybe to come to the table and have that discussion as far as if we're going to do this, if we're going to use county CARES Act funding resources, what is the most appropriate funding mechanism to initiate that level of service to best protect the citizens of Warren County? And I think that you hit the nail on the head. And based off the response data, is it two people? So if you're going to fund it, do you add additional funding to ensure that two people aspect? If Chief Brown says, no, we can initiate a duty crew, have somebody readily available to guarantee that volunteer level of response right now, what is probably your longest volunteer assembly rate? Four minutes?
Yeah.
Would you say?
Three to four.
So, so three to four minutes. So in a, in a significant incident, that three or four minutes can prove fruitful. So I think when you look at that as, as Chief alluded to and alluded to, we're, we're not against this. We just want to make sure you have the data and you're prepared for that next step because it'll come.
It would also provide you the opportunity to split crew.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely.
Well, I mean, you, it, the, the COVID was a trigger for a lot of places, not only Chester Gap, not only Rapid Hennick, not only Warren. But I, I think, you know, just like Mr. Daley was saying, you know, we're, we're looking now at the short term with the, with what we're doing with COVID. Yes, I think we're going to have to have this discussion at a later time on what's going to happen once COVID figures out when it's going to stop or when it's not going to stop, when the funding is going to stop or not stop. I think that's something that we're going to have to, we're going to have to plan on. We're, we're going to have to have that discussion. When that's going to happen? I'd have no idea. If I could predict that, I'd be a millionaire. I'd be sitting there. But it, it, it is a discussion we're going to have to have between the counties, between Chief Maybe's office and myself. It is, it's coming. I mean, it, we, we're not going to be able to get by this. I don't think, you know, Front Royal is staffed with two people. They're not staffed with four, they're not staffed with six. Every department in Warren County that is staffed is staffed with two people. So, you know, really, they're understaffed. I mean, I hear it all the time. I mean, you, you, we get busy, you know, the, the resources are depleted, you're going out of the county. Yes, I've, I've called in and staffed several different times, but we have still not been utilized. It has happened. They, you know, called a department out of, you know, Frederick County instead of calling us for a call on South Street. But, you know, I can't control that. I did offer. But, and yes, it has come up with the, some of the fire levy board meeting at Fire Levy in Rapid Hennick and with some of the members of the border supervisors in Rapid Hennick County, you know, why are we paying you to go into Warren County? So, you know, I'm dealing with a double-edged sword, you know? I'm sitting here going, okay, you know, we want to help over here, but we've got to help over here. But, you know, if, if I can assure you, if, if Warren County pays for half or pays for a second person, you know, we have no choice but to staff every morning when they, when they come in. We have a few times. I had this conversation with, with, with Jerry here not too long ago when Chief Maybe was out on sick leave. And, you know, I, I flat right out told him that, you know, hey, we're here, call us if you need us, you know? But, and we have staffed a few times, but like I say, once Warren County starts, you know, funding, we have no, you know, the way I look at it, we, we have an obligation to staff. And I have no problem with that. The, the other thing I want to kind of make clear, I know we've been, it's been focused on just EMS, but the paid people that we have are fire and EMS trained. We do have one or two that are strictly just EMS, that they don't work that much. When they do, we usually try to have them overlap with somebody, you know, that, that is fire trained. So that we're not just, you know, sitting out there if there's a house fire, regardless if it's in Rapid Hennick or Warren, you know, they can respond and, and make a, a difference in it. But we do have a couple that are medics. Our unit is not equipped right now ALS, we're just BLS, but we do have a few that are medics. So we are, you know, moving forward with that. Unfortunately, our, our ambulance has been out of service now going on almost three months. It only has 10,000 miles on it, but we had a cam shaft seal that started leaking, which required the cab to be removed. And it has been in the shop for almost three months now. Warren County has, has been very, very cooperative with us and loaned us a unit. And I'd like to thank them for that. But like I say, we can't move forward with making it an ALS unit because we don't have it. So once that's back in at the station, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, then we, you know, we can look at that. So. I just think we need to focus on the short term right now and move forward with the, you know, the CARES Act, what we can do or what we can't do, and look down the road long term and see where, see where we go.
I think the CARES Act is designed specifically for situations like this. So at least that's not prospective for what it was meant to do. So.
I mean, I think that we can, we can continue to talk about, about this. We realize that you need help. We want to help. So let us get that first person for you and then take the second step as, as quickly as we can determine some metrics or whatever. And I, I don't want to kick this horse any more than it already has been kicked today. I'm ready to get something, get something on our agenda and get something moving for you.
Yep.
Soon is better.
I'm in agreement with that.
We'd greatly appreciate this relationship. I mean, citizens shouldn't worry about what sign, what side of the line on a map they're on. So being together like this, working together is fantastic.
Well, we're on the, we're on the side of our people.
Same here.
Which my family lives in your district.
I'm very grateful. Thank you.
We know where he lives. Don't worry.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you guys for today.
Appreciate your time.